May twentieth, two thousand twenty, six P M via Zoom. Uh. Well, we'll try the pledge of allegiance. I won't make Luke do it because he's on such a delay here. So. Uh, yeah, well, I'll lead. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America.
Of America.
And to the Republic.
Republic.
For which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. There we go. Hey, look at that. All right, very good. Um. Do we have any celebrations or presentations tonight? No, okay. I didn't think so.
Other than, uh, I'm very pleased to see the the public participating tonight. And, uh, this might be a good time to remind people if they're not on mute yet, except for school board members. Um, and, uh, and then, yeah, so that helps our meetings run a little more efficiently and helps protect the the noises sometimes that are around us.
Sure. Okay. Thank you, Tim.
Sure.
Uh, item number three, agenda changes. We've got one. Uh, three point one, we're gonna add, uh, or I'm sorry, we're gonna add eight point five, which will be the first reading of proposed policy E B C dash E B C A. I think other other board members are okay with that. Thumbs up?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, consent agenda. I did read the minutes. Everything looked good. And then we're we've got approval of some hires there. I'm, let's see, sorry, trying to read all this stuff off of my iPhone since I'm using the iPad for the video. Um. I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Luke seconds. All those in favor, all will do the little roll call. Mr. Martinez.
Uh, yes.
Hi.
Uh, Nancy. Oh, yeah, you're you're muted. I'm assuming that was a yes. Kaylee?
Hi.
Okay, and Andy is an I as well. All right, uh, number five, citizen input. This will be the first time we've, uh, had any citizen input, so bear with me here. Well, uh, I don't know if Tim's. Uh, how are we gonna do this?
Sorry?
Oh, yeah, uh.
So, yeah, you do you have your your script there about halfway through?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I was just in terms of who to recognize.
Oh, you just, uh, you call their name and then I'll unmute them. Or they can, they can unmute themselves when you call them.
Okay, yeah, I was just looking at the participant list here. I guess I'll just, um, or or just ask for volunteers, so.
Or maybe they can, maybe they could raise their hand. And of course, knowing that you can only see eight of them and there are twenty seven people there, so.
Most everybody I can see is, yeah. Um, all right, let me find my little script and then we'll just, uh.
Yeah.
We'll let him have it here. Okay, uh, citizen input on behalf of fellow board members. At this time, I'd like to invite any member of the audience to quote, step to the podium with comments about items of interest or concern that do not appear on the agenda this evening. Please begin by stating your name and address for the record. Uh, please keep it to five minutes, uh, so we can keep the meeting moving in a timely fashion. We ask that you remember that Oregon law prohibits us from discussing specific employees or their job performance. If you have thoughts to share about items that are included as topics for tonight's meeting, we would invite those comments when we reach that point in the meeting. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I also wanted to remind members of the board, um, that even though our chat room is open, um, it is, uh, not to be used during our meeting. Uh, in use of the chat room is would be a a public record. And that's just another management thing. So any conversations the board is having, and that would be the same for the audience. Um, the chat room is, even though it's available, it's not, uh, there for a question and answer or conversations between, uh, anyone present.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
All right, any, we'll see if we can do this in order of fashion, orderly fashion. Any any, uh, takers that have unmuted themselves here? Or or do you have to unmute them?
No, I think they can unmute themselves.
Okay.
I'd like to raise my hand for Bree. She she can't raise her hand because she doesn't have enough. So Bree, are you ready?
Sure, I'll go first. Um, so we, one of the things we talked about, um, recently is just the hiring of accounts full tank counselor, um, over a teachers, elementary teachers, which I I today I've got a lot of information and it sounds like things, like maybe we're just not updated on current information or, and I know you got the budget today and that's what we were waiting for, but my job today to speak was in apparent capacity, so and not teacher. And, um, so just looking at if we did not hire no more teachers, or really it's gonna be the three five, but really K five, it impacts everyone there because there's gonna be a ripple effect. The number of students is, well, I'll just use my daughter as an example. And I know that board members and people attending to you have kids around the same age, um, but, um, you know, she's been in a blend or a class over thirty kids or slightly less than thirty kids, um, every year. And I feel like as a parent, you know, it's not ideal. It's not ideal for her to be, um, in blends or class sizes, and it looks like it's gonna continue to be that way her entire elementary career. And I know the COVID thing, we can't help it because it was like we're looking like we were in a really good position with the money coming in and we're finally going to get more teachers to make that not happen. But here we are back in the same thing. So for me as a parent, you know, and and a teacher, it's it's just, I hope you consider that and think about that with, um, the budget.
All right. Thank you, Bree.
Thank you, Bree.
Yep.
Okay.
Uh, Andy, Deb Watson has her hands raised.
Okay.
And then Tina would be, uh, next.
Okay.
Hi, everybody. This is Deborah Watson. Um, my address is P O Box five eight eight Murphy, Oregon nine seven five three three. And I just want to talk a little bit about, um, high class sizes in three five and what next year might look like if we, um, aren't able to hire more teachers. Uh, we have a, um, when that class comes in, it puts our special ed numbers for our wing at about twenty people, which is a really high number for, uh, the amount of kids we have. So low class sizes would allow us to better serve all the children. Um, our lowest kids and our highest kids. And after all of this with being at home and having the kids not, um, in a classroom with a with a certified teacher, they're gonna need more one-on-one attention. And higher class sizes does not allow that to happen. Um, if we just run the numbers, teachers only have so many minutes and with so many children, it's hard to reach all of those children every day. So I wanted to put a plug in again for, uh, more teachers, uh, in our building, especially in our wing three five, because I know historically we have dealt with large class sizes. And from my experience last year with large class sizes, it's just better for children if they have more teacher contact time. Um, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Uh, this would be for Tina, Tina Loreno.
Tina?
Yeah.
Yep. You're you're muted.
Can you hear me?
Good.
There you go.
Okay, um, Tina Loreno, two four nine five seven Pistol River Loop. Um, just, uh, I was the only one at that last special meeting when the furlough was voted on. So just to kind of add on to Bree and Deb. Um, in that meeting, Andy requested that, uh, well, Andy said that the bottom line of this furlough goal is to better serve the kids in the district. Um, that's the bottom line. Those are quotes. Sorry. Um, Scott also commented that this money should be used for kids programs. Tim then said that our plan is to add an elementary teacher. So the benefits to the students is by having an additional elementary teacher. So I just wanted to throw that out there so that you guys were aware of that. I also wanted to bring to your attention the furlough money, um, for the staff. We received emails this week. Um, and I heard from many staff that they were unaware that there would be such a high turnover time between losing the money and getting our payments. Um, I thought I asked about that in the in the meeting, but, um, the recording of the meeting doesn't include chat. Thankfully, I don't live paycheck to paycheck, but I remember very, very well when I did. And taking three days out of a pay, out of a monthly paycheck is a lot for people that do live paycheck to paycheck. And we've gotten no response. I haven't asked, but we, I've heard there's been no response as far as when we can expect our first check. Um, one of the classified members, um, said that he heard it would be the second week of June. Um, so I'm hoping for clarification on that. And if they're only weekly, um, our quote unemployment checks are only weekly. You're, this is severely affecting, um, those employees that live paycheck to paycheck, and they've spoken to me about it. I don't know why. Um, so I wanted to bring that up. According to the timeline, um, that meeting was on a Wednesday and the application was supposed to be signed after the the board approved it. The employee's paperwork was turned in, um, by Friday, two days later. Benefits would start on Sunday. Um, when somebody asked the question what the turnaround time would be, uh, Tim explained that after the paperwork was signed, that the management was all on the district. And we, I just feel like we haven't been kept in the loop and that it's not working the way it was intended when this was all signed off on by the employees. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Tina.
I'm scanning the room for more, uh, Danielle Sprouse.
I am Danielle Sprouse, nine six four eight five Julie Creek in Brookings. Um, I just have a clarification question that the a furlough money is being used for a licensed position. I think it said that in the M O U that it was.
Did not.
It did not. Okay. Okay. Thanks.
Yeah, and I'd be happy to send you a copy of that M O U again. What the M O U does say in the license is, uh, that the money would go towards uh, licensed salaries, benefits and so on. And it also actually says and not hire any more staff is actually what the M O U says. I appreciate the clarification on that.
That's funny.
Looking for any more, Shauna. Looks like Shauna's hands up. Andy?
Oh, yeah. Shauna, go ahead.
Shauna, two eight three seven nine Matier. Um, I just want to talk a little bit about the high numbers in three five, but also I think K two next year might be affected if we have to move a teacher from their wing to our wing because of that big second grade class this year. Um, so even bringing that teacher to our wing doesn't necessarily mean we're getting another teacher. Um, but also if even with that, there's going to be lots of blends. And I just don't feel like blends are good for kids. I think the kids are usually the ones that lose in that and some may fall in the cracks. But also, if we have blends next year, especially in three five, they're gonna be really high numbers. So a high numbered blend is difficult as well as a high number of students with a high number of special ed kids. So just want everyone to think about that and keep that in mind as we think about, uh, those little people in our classrooms. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Shauna.
Thank you, Shauna.
I'm gonna say something.
Uh, Tina, I'm just gonna go back, uh, see if there's anyone else. Uh, yeah, Andy, Tina's, looks like she's like to speak again.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just want to clarify because I don't see, obviously, the licensed M O U that it said not being used to hire a new teacher, yet in the board meeting you said that that money was specifically going to be used um, to add an elementary teacher.
So I'm gonna address that in in old business.
Yeah.
With with the rollout of the budget update from today.
Okay, thank you.
And I hope to, I hope that clears it up.
We'll see.
Yes, it will.
Okay. Any other takers?
Can I speak? I'm Desha Champlain. I don't know how to work this thing and I'm almost positive. I've somehow I've, I don't know. Can I, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go, go, go ahead.
All right, um, Desha Champlain, uh, P O Box one one six four in Gold Beach. Um, I'm speaking from a parental standpoint. Um, and I need to just put this out there from the gate. Um, I am not happy right now. I am, I'm actually, um, really having a hard time with my emotions listening to this, um, this call. Um, I don't know if, um, everyone on this call fully understands the amount of, um, of importance that should be placed on education and education, learning outcomes and goals for our students in this community. Um, from my perspective as a parent, they always seem to get the bottom of the barrel. I am not implying at all that leadership or those in leadership are specifically taking the top, the cream of the crop. I am simply stating what my perspective, every year, we 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 scope out the state for excellent talent. We obtain some of the best teachers, uh, Deborah Watson, Roner, Sprouse, they're all pretty much brand new. They come in, they do a fantastic job of trying, and I feel like that we do not value that, um, in this community, um, at the leadership level. Tim, this is not directly at you. Um, although you are the leadership, but I will say it is time to prioritize our children's education above everything else. When I take a look at the budget, which unfortunately two thousand eighteen is the most recent budget online, so I'm not able to even look at two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. Um, that I think needs to be addressed as well because I could have come with some real numbers at you today. Um, however, when I take a look at two thousand eighteen, there are a couple of things that stand out to me. Um, for the record, for the record, I work in business services at Pelican Bay State Prison. I specifically work in business administration, procurement and, um, the administration side in terms of running a budget of upwards of one hundred and fifty four million dollars plus per year, and I'm controller of that. So I have some experience when it comes to budgeting. Um, what I will say is I would really appreciate it if you could please take a look at the budget and wherever you can make changes that will directly benefit and not just hiring of teachers. The M O U, by the way, the language is completely ambiguous and vague. It's up to interpretation. I find that only beneficial to one side. I believe we need, we need to hire new teachers and more teachers for our elementary school. These people are working their, excuse me, they're working their rear ends off. They're very passionate people. And I cannot stand when I watch them work so hard and no one seems to value that. Um, my twins are gonna be in a blended class again, unacceptable. I have seven students that start from kindergarten and will eventually graduate in this community, and we have the funding and we have the finances to put back into our community and to make the positive changes necessary. I can't give you facts because I haven't had the time to look at them. But if you'll give me the opportunity at some point in the future, I can do that. That's all I want to say.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Tina.
Good day, Sha.
And and just just for your your information, if you're still there, the your, the the discussion is timely. We will be having the budget meeting in two weeks, so that that's the perfect time to have the discussion. So.
And you know what? Actually, I I am still here. And one other thing that I wanted to point out as well is I don't I, and again, this could be just from lack of updating on the website, but I don't see our Curry County District actually following state protocols and processes when it comes to how we go about hiring. Um, and then again, that could be just my my own interpretation of what I see, and I can be wrong. But there are some state processes that I feel like we're kind of, um, potentially not following. I'll get you those numbers as soon as I get an opportunity to do more research. But, um, thank you very much, by the way, um, everybody for taking a listen to to my thoughts on it. Again, it's nothing personal, but I have skin in the game. I've got seven students in that school. Um, and so I do not like that we're gonna be blending again and that a bunch of my kids specifically are gonna be dealing with huge ratio sizes that that's, it's proven fact. It's it's researched, it's known, teacher ratio, if it's high, it's a problem, and that's that's just unacceptable with the funding that we have.
All right, thank you. Any other takers out there?
Uh, Andy, I don't see any other hands up if people are waving at us, so.
Okay, we're gonna move on. I'm gonna just make a quick comment here. I, you know, I feel like this is one of those situations where where, you know, no decisions have been made. Well, Tim's gonna get, Tim will get into the details on the counselor position. Uh, you know, I was trying to jog my memory from the March meeting, it feels like about a year ago March, but um, the bottom line is we don't know how much money we're getting. Uh, we're we're getting, gonna be getting it from like five different pools this year and the budget is a work in progress and, you know, the well, yeah, I I'll I'll save it for for Tim to cover, um, and we'll just, we'll move on with the agenda here, so. Uh, district reports, uh, we'll we'll dispatch with the student report unless there happens to be one on the call. And we'll move to the financial report. Crystal. Is Crystal here?
She was earlier.
Oh, okay.
I see her on the list.
Yeah, she's not muted.
Okay, I do know that she sent out your financial reports via email, uh, either Monday night or early Tuesday morning. No, yeah, she was in the meeting here somewhere just a moment ago.
I see a snap of her that says no video and no speaker.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
I have no questions.
Yeah, I reviewed them. I did. There wasn't anything that jogged my my interest. Um, okay, well, then we will move to principal reports. Mr. Denny.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Um, Tim, I'm gonna try to share my screen if that's possible.
Sure.
Hmm, it's not letting me. Okay, well, I had a backup.
There you go.
Um, just real quick, um, I worked on a letter today. We're gonna try to get out in the mail tomorrow. Um, to all the eighth grade parents, we're gonna do a drive-through graduation. Uh, same time, same place, June fourth, it's six o'clock. Um, we're gonna get our P A system out there and I don't know if anybody will decorate or not. And then the parent, the hopefully the eighth graders won't drive, but the parents will drive the eighth graders through. Um, one at a time, we'll announce their name and I'll be masked up and give them, give them their certificate and people, you know, they can decorate their cars or do whatever they want to do and honk their horns and I talked to Tammy Ross and she's gonna have a photographer there so we can get pictures of that, too. And, uh, we also have some volunteers that are going to, uh, if so, if a child's parents can't make it, which happens every year, we have a couple of kids that have a hard time getting there. Uh, they'll volunteer to drive the child through, or they can ride a bicycle or even walk through the parking lot if they want. Um, so we'll see how that goes. It's it's sad, but, uh, maybe it's good to tone down the eighth grade celebration anyway. It's been kind of getting out of control the last few, last few years. Um, but anyway, that's what we're planning for the eighth grade. Uh, board members are welcome to attend if they want. Uh, we're gonna try to get as many staff as we can that'll maybe stand up alongside the school and kind of wave and and make eye contact with the kids as they go through. Um, we're working on, uh, the last group of packets, uh, the last week. Packets are gonna go home, but those will be considered, uh, kind of summer packets. They don't need to be returned. They'll have a little bit more work in them for things for children to do over the summer. Um, and we're we're working on getting those. Those will start being printed up next week in the cycle that we have. Um, I was able to go out on a couple, um, runs last week. It was very interesting. It's amazing what our bus drivers can do with those little buses back in the narrow alleys of Gold Beach. Um, it was, it was good to see some of the kids that were on the route that I saw and some of the parents. Um, it it was interesting to see the the different, um, I say lifestyles, the different, um, economics of some of the families. Um, and it was, I, we're encouraging, we have, we had a lot of teachers go out and and some of our aides went out last week on some of the runs, and we're trying to do that as much as we can through the rest of the year. Thanks to Sydney and Perry really encouraged everybody to do that, and and we've really been uh, encouraging that because it really opens your eyes when you see where these kids are coming from. It was a good thing. So and I was glad I went. Um, we have kindergarten roundup has been going on. Um, we have, I believe, twenty five now, Tina, thumbs up? Yeah, twenty five, thank you. And we'll probably end up getting some more, too. We have a Zoom meeting scheduled with all the parents that have contacted us. And we're gonna, they're gonna meet me, uh, on the Zoom meeting and also meet Anna and Michelle. And then we'll, uh, have question and answers for them. Just maybe we'll be able to see some of the kids. And they'll start having a face to go with the names of the principal and and their kindergarten teachers for next year. Uh, so we're looking for that, forward to that tomorrow night at six thirty. And any anybody that's on this call, if you want, just contact me and I can send you a link to the, uh, Zoom meeting information. We're starting to work on, uh, actually, we have been for a while, but we're still working on the schedule for two thousand twenty one. Uh, as you know, part of the conversation tonight and and hearing about the budget forecast, it, a lot depends on the staffing that we have, so it's it's kind of difficult to make decisions now because we're kind of in a worst case scenario mode right now. And then as things get added in, hopefully we'll be able to adjust the schedule and and, uh, you know, I kind of agree with what everybody says about the, uh, the blend classes and and the teachers have to work almost twice as hard. And it's just not really good for the the kids and, but we're gonna make it work the best we can. Uh, you know, Corby had it this year, um, uh, Shauna's done it in the past, uh, and several other teachers have too, but, uh, we'll do what we can and hopefully we'll get some good news out of the budget, at least better news than what we were hearing initially for the budget forecast. And that's, I had some pictures that I was gonna show you of some kids from several years ago, but those are on my computer that you can't see. Um, are there any questions from anybody?
Uh, none for me.
Thank you, guys.
All right, thanks, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
All right, Mr. Metzger.
There. So, uh, just a couple of updates from the high school as we come into the end of the year and kind of a roundup, uh, wrapping things up here. Uh, we are going to have one new staff member on next year. Uh, our our incomparable Spanish teacher, Profay Nichols, is gonna be moving on to, uh, the Clamath Falls from here. Um, her husband had left last year, uh, previously and been hired over there, and she, they've been living apart. been living apart, so they're going to be closing down to one household. We, a couple of weeks back, got to hire, or got to, uh, offer a position to a gentleman and his name's Bob Cronly. Um, he is coming in from Idaho and comes extremely highly recommended as both a Spanish teacher that is really enthusiastic, relates well to kids, uh, is very empathetic with kids and working with them. Um, they're, the, his principals couldn't have said basically nicer things about him if they tried, but also as a, a athletic coach, potentially too, for a couple of different , uh, sports. So we're looking forward to having Mr. Cronly on our team next year. Um, couple of updates on distance learning. So this week, uh, we've kept a sort of the, the more or less traditional high school model, our, uh, Gold Beach High School model where the last two weeks, um, this next week would be review for finals and then the final week would be finals. Um, so we assigned the last new work this week. Many of those assignments are final projects and things like that for classes the kids are going to be working on. Um, there were two subjects that last week kind of recognized there was just a level of overwhelm, um, from our students. Those were our literature and science classes. Um, so they took a, they, they took a pause last week. They'll have two more weeks material, but it's on that week pause that they had a high turn in rate. Uh, kids were catching up on things. They were really reaching out and doing a lot more work. So they were, that, that has shown some positives, which just reinforces, I think, this next two weeks, uh, we're going to be using our time to connect with kids, find out what they still need to finish, talk to them about what they need help with. We're going to have teachers scheduling more meetings, um, and things like that. Really the goal is to get kids across the finish line and get them, get them ready for next year. Um, the majority, vast majority of our students have engaged in some level of work. However, it, just like any other time at, at this time of year, but more so with the lack of regular contact, we've seen kids move out of the area and we don't always have the clearest picture right at the moment of what's going on. Uh, because other districts, especially in other states, may have different rules about time of year and where they're finished or not, or the, uh, the various states of chaos that COVID-19 has inflicted on us. So our, um, our plan for next year, as far as those credits go, ODE guidelines provide through September 30th of 2020, the complete work that is not finished by the end of the year. Uh, I am planning on allowing and our staff is planning on allowing to completion through the end of quarter one as necessary, uh, because we have kids that in this area may have difficulty accessing technology, may have difficulty accessing the materials. And the other reality is there is a, there's an inequity in access when this is a less than ideal situation as far as work being assigned and yet, um, the, the student may not be regularly able to engage with RACs. Um, so we will be, we'll be working through those next year. Our staff is committed to making sure that every student has an opportunity to get their credit they need to graduate high school, um, and supporting them through that no matter when they get it done. Um, I always keep technology on the, the, the docket here because it's one of the things that we talk about frequently in, in these board meetings and I think rightfully so, but especially right now. Um, GEAR Up has agreed to purchase an additional card of Surface Pro laptops for the high school. So with the recent emphasis on distance learning and the, the sort of, um, rapid nature of the way that came on and, and it was in flux for a while, it has really gone to show the importance of training our students in how to use this technology in an educational manner, um, and helping them find that they can engage with it in a, um, in a successful way, in a positive way for their, their educational enrichment, especially as we look ahead to the possibility of, um, some kind of model where there might be more distance learning required. Sports, this would normally be the time I'd be giving you an update on sports. There isn't a lot to talk about right now because those have been, uh, extremely limited. Uh, however, O S A made an announcement today that they are going to allow O D E and the governor to provide guidance to schools, um, and make recommendations for what sports are going to look like based on that. There aren't any real clear answers yet as to practices, facility availability guidelines or spectator, uh, spectator participation. Um, their statement was more that we're, we're committed to trying to get it going again and you just kind of got to bear with us. It's kind of what we're being given. We recognize that these events are important to our students and our community and because they're important to our students, they're important to us. So we're going to be trying to get, you know, things rolling as best we can and keep kids, uh, sports and outs, extracurriculars, sometimes those are the activities that keep kids engaged. So we're going to keep them on our, on our list as best we can. Uh, the other thing, last year I, about this time, I was talking about goals for next year and I think right now the, the, the only goal that it's feasible to set right now is that, um, at the high school, we're going to, we're going to come in with an added, positive attitude and an, an attitude of hope. It's an uncertain time, but really the thing that doesn't change and the thing that's not uncertain is that every teacher at Gold Beach High is committed to making sure that kids get the education that they deserve and that they're prepared for their future. We don't know what everything's going to look like. We don't know that, um, we don't know what's going to come next, but things will change. They'll continue to change and we will continue to improve. And that's where we're at with that. So that, right now, as it stands, that's kind of the goal for this year, for this next year. And that's it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Metzger. Any questions for Josh?
Thank you, Mr. Metzger. How you doing? Uh, I had a quick, quick question. You said there was a large percentage of the high school population. Can you hear me all right?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, you said there's a pretty large population of the high school that's, that's participating. What's the percentage? Is there a percentage that, of students that are not participating at all?
That's where, so, that's why I mentioned specifically those move outs and things like that. Um, it's a very low number of kids that are, have not participated in any way, form or fashion. Um, I'm talking about out of 101 that are currently active with us. Uh, we're talking about realistically less than 10. Um, and some of those have moved to other states and things like that and are kind of in flux right at the moment and we're trying to clean those up.
Great, thank you.
And it's one of those unusual things when you talk about high school versus, uh, elementary school, when you talk about a kid in elementary school, they're generally working with one teacher, middle school, they're working with three or four. Um, with high school, you're talking about oftentimes six teachers in some cases. So the kid may only have done things for two or three of their classes, but may have fallen off in other places. So really what we're looking at is where can we celebrate the success of getting stuff done? So.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay, superintendent report, Mr. Wilson.
Yeah, and, and before, thank you, Andy. Before I, uh, get into my report, Tom asked if you could add one more item.
Oh, sure.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Tim, for you, the gentleman from California giving me the floor. Um, just real quick, two things I forgot to mention and they were terrible that I neglected them. The snack pack program has been doing a tremendous amount of adding on to our food deliveries and Michelle and the team of volunteers there, the snack pack people have been awesome. And I cannot say enough about the Ascend program. Uh, they are running tutoring classes, they're going out on all the deliveries, they're driving for some of our deliveries. So the Ascend program is really helping out Riley Creek and the high school right now too. So I want to kind of give a shout out to the Ascend program and to the snack pack program. Thank you, guys, for all that you guys are doing. Thank you.
Absolutely agreed.
If I knew somebody that worked for the Ascend program, I would tell them that. I'll do my best.
Andy, do you want me to get my kid to get on Roblox with your kid?
Yes, yeah, yeah, they can pass it along. Okay. All right, thank you, Tom. All right, back to, back to Mr. Wilson.
All right, thank you. Let me see if I can find something to share here. Sorry. All right, can you, is my screen have my report on it then?
No.
Okay, let me try it now.
It worked with the flag earlier. It took, it took a minute. It did, it did eventually work.
Okay. Well, if not, I'll just read from it. I actually, I can do that. That's no biggie to read from it. Um, so, uh, our enrollment actually, uh, for the record is currently at 481 in the district. Uh, and that is up, uh, from 466, uh, from a year ago at this time. Um, we've had a, we know we've had a couple families, uh, leave and, um, not aware we, if we've enrolled a couple of, uh, families as well, but, um, so currently 332 at Riley Creek and 149 at the high school. Um, I did want to comment on a couple of other items. So we are, um, the week after students leave on June the 5th, uh, our staff will be involved in a couple of days of professional development. Um, we will continue, our K5 teachers will continue with some curriculum and professional development with their reading English language arts program in wonders and we'll do, uh, a day in June and then a follow-up day, uh, when we come back, um, on August 31st around that time. We're also going to take some time, uh, as a staff to go through some structured activities around evaluating, uh, our distance learning program and discussing as groups what things went well, um, what things, you know, if we had the chance to have a do-over, we all recognize again the fantastic efforts our, our teachers have made in, in putting together a distance learning program in, in less than two weeks. Uh, and then certainly commendations, don't stop there, but go to our, our classified and support staff for making the packets and, and, and so on. And so, um, we are going to take some time then to evaluate, uh, that. And as, uh, Mr. Metzger alluded to earlier, um, O D E is in the process of, um, providing some guidance, um, around what the fall looks like. Uh, the initial guidance will probably be out the first week of June, uh, but we've already been told it will probably change again in July and once again in August, uh, as the situation, uh, changes. Um, I attended a statewide meeting today, um, uh, with all, with superintendents when we heard the budget, uh, updates as well as the plans for the fall. And, um, after some general messages, we went into small groups and, um, my group probably represented the feelings of most groups, um, uh, in the sense that most of rural Oregon is ready to go to school and without restrictions or at least some restrictions. Um, whereas the hotspot, uh, and urban areas, uh, tend to have, you know, more of the concerns. Uh, and this isn't just concerns from, or, uh, it not just from school, but actually obviously from parents and from kids. Um, there, there's much of our state who wants to return, well, I should say, we all want to return to some, some form of normalcy and we all also recognize what that new normalcy might be. And so throughout the summer, we'll be working on what those, um, updated plans might look like. Uh, and I also would want to, uh, add on to two items that were prevalent during that, that meeting today. Uh, and one is the social emotional health of, of our families, of our community. That really, uh, as much work as we put into providing lessons and trying to stay the course with that, um, we, we probably can only imagine, but really won't know what the impact of this, uh, social isolation has had on our kids and the families. Uh, and so we really need to be aware of whatever structures we plan, that, that, that's, that health i- is paramount. Um, uh, and again, not just for our families and, and, uh, and students, but also our, our staff as well. And then the other one is that sense of hope. We want to, uh, conclude this year with recognizing that it, it's not ideal. Uh, we've done our best to, uh, provide education and services to the best that we can and we know, uh, that this gap in regular day-to-day traditional learning, um, is going to take some time to, to, uh, improve upon itself. And I have no doubts that we have the right people here in our district, uh, to do that. In addition to the new teachers, uh, that we, uh, have announced, so the new staff, I did want to announce to the board that, uh, Greg Brown, uh, special education and math teacher at the high school, uh, has rescinded his resignation and he will return to be full-time teacher at the high school, uh, next year. Um, secondly, uh, with disappointment, uh, in both cases, obviously, we're losing two of our key support coordinators. Uh, Ally Merramore, our Riley Creek Garden Coordinator, uh, has resigned and she and her new baby and her husband, they're all, the family is relocating to the Valley, to Applegate, I believe. And, uh, we all could, uh, sing accolades for what Ally has done for, uh, our kids and providing, uh, a great education in the area of, of Riley Creek Garden. Uh, we're hoping to partner up with, um, Curry Watershed's, uh, council and some other local agencies to help fill that position back in, in some form. Uh, additionally, uh, I'm reporting to you that Brittany Garrett, our Garrett Coordinator, has resigned that position. And she, uh, uh, held that position for this past school year. Um, next year is the final year of the seven-year grant, so we'll be looking for, uh, a replacement for Brittany. And again, Brittany, talk about amazing people, a person who, uh, was working on her master's degree, uh, was a full-time staffer with Ascend, um, and doing her student teaching, uh, all at the same time. So, uh, we wish her well and, and, uh, in her future endeavors. Um, in, in the minutes on the agenda, it, it told a little bit more about our two new, uh, teachers, our two new staff members, excuse me. Uh, Bob Cronely, uh, is currently at St. Marie's, St. Mary's in Idaho. Uh, and then our new elementary counselor, uh, is David Franken from currently working in La Grande. And, uh, I know that Tom and his interview team was, uh, very impressed, uh, with, um, with his credentials and like Mr. Cronely, um, their, their current staffs are, are very sad to see both of these gentlemen leave and we're very fortunate to, uh, have them join us here at Gold Beach. Um, today I added with board members, uh, Luke, this gets back to one of your questions and so maybe if you get a little more time, um, board members in your updated packet. Uh, I asked the teachers to complete a survey and they had a very quick response time and I really appreciate that with everything else that was going on. But, uh, those are included in this packet and I asked the staff to give their best estimates, uh, in a few different questions. One was, uh, evaluating the participation in student learning. So I asked them to rate between one and a hundred, if you will. Um, how many kids did at least one assignment? How many did at least half? And how many did at least three quarters? Um, secondly, uh, to try to estimate how many of their students took advantage of the online versus the paper and packet. And, and we recognize that, um, things changed in the middle. Some started online and then decided for whatever reason that packets were easier, um, and vice versa. So, um, and then the final questions I asked, uh, all of the licensed staff was approximately in your 40-hour week, how much time did you, uh, spend in prepping your lessons? How much time did you spend in correcting or evaluating progress? And then how much time did you spend in communicating with, uh, students and their families? Whether that was, uh, via email or text or our phone calls? And so I'm not going to go into the report specifically. Um, we'll be use, we'll use some of this information, uh, when we meet in June. Um, uh, and so please, if you do have the time to go, go back and you can, uh, check out those, uh, those numbers. Uh, Mr. Chair, that's all for my report unless you have something else.
Uh, no, I, I'm good. Anybody have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. And I did see that, uh, the data that the, the staff put together. So thank you, everybody, for doing that.
All right. I lost my page here. A very small page. Um, okay. Number seven, old business, uh, 7.1 state budget update. Um, before I let Tim go, there, I, there was two other things I remembered that I wanted to mention at the end of the public comment period. Uh, number one, in regards to the M O U, uh, and Tim can read it verbatim, but the point was, were the savings that we're going to generate from the furloughs is either, is going the savings that we're going to generate from the furloughs is either, is going, the intention is to either use it to be able to maintain our current staffing levels or, or, you know, we don't know how much money we're getting, so we don't know. But, but the whole point of the money, it's being funneled to the personnel bucket, whether it's used to save a position or add one or keep us from losing two instead of three. That was the point of it. And that's what it's going to be used for. And that's what the MOU says. So that, and then secondly, in regards to the counselor position, again, March was a long time ago. My hair is getting gray and falling out rapidly. The discussion was, and if we had to go to, if we were going to use, you have to visualize these pots of money we're pulling money from, the student success money. If we only have enough money to fund the counselor, we, we fund the counselor with the student success money, that then frees up the existing money that we're paying Sydney Rhodes with. That in combination with, or that added to the, the halftime middle school position, Jean Zuber's position would turn into one full-time teacher who would get allocated to the three, five. So we're adding the, you know, the intention was, again, March, long time ago, things, a lot of things have changed. We get a full-time counselor, we also add another teacher to the three, five area. So that was, that was the line of thinking at the time, you know, the budget, a lot of things have changed budget wise, which we're going to hear about in about two seconds. But that was, that was the thinking. And I know that, I don't think there was anybody at that meeting with the exception of board members and administrators, but we are where we are right now. So we'll, you know, we'll see what happens with the funding. And with that, I'll turn it to Mr. Wilson.
Thank you. Thank you. And, you know, this has, this is a day that I've saw in a couple of different community meetings, I have mentioned, this is kind of like the new Ides of March from Shakespeare. You know, in the teacher world, we always equated Ides with Ides of March, March 15th with that day of knowing whether or not you had a contract for next year. And so May the 20th, or its equivalent now in the economic world, was that day we kind of circled and said, okay, well, we're going to find out. And I, I had to think from the last couple of days that, you know, somebody knows. But this was, is the day that was announced. And so the information I'm going to share with you is, is already been on the local, what, sorry, it's been on local TV in some formats. And so, and I'm sure the Oregonian and other newspapers will be sharing the same thing that I'm going to be sharing with you now. I think the key things to remember around this is we all recognize the impacts, the economic, socially, emotional, all the impacts that this pandemic has, has presented to us as a challenge. And we have to recognize what the results of that economic damage is. And with the information that we have, make the best decisions with, with that information and the resources we have. To champion Dasha's, Ms. Champlain's plea, all of us actually, we all have, please understand the best intentions in mind to fully fund our schools to the best of our abilities to provide the best education. I know that probably sounds like a bunch of blah, blah, blah. But until we have all of the available funds in place, we're not hiding anything. We're not saving. We know the benefits of smaller class sizes. We know the benefits of having a full-time counselor. We've all, you're going to see the impact. Imagine the, the work that Sydney has done on a halftime basis. You know the value that that's been. Imagine now the opportunity to have a full-time person and to have that, not have that. I will say that I made that decision to hire Mr. Fonkin as soon as Fonkin, so, excuse me, because we knew that under the Students to Sex Act and this SIA, that every district in America, especially Oregon, was looking for a counselor. And, and if we were able to get the best, that usually means you hire first. And we, through the, the process, Mr. Danny and his team selected Mr. Fonkin. And so that, that was a priority. And that's in no disrespect to the new elementary teacher that we knew we also wanted to hire, but knowing that the pool, if you will, of elementary teachers is much larger and to get that quality counseling person in was the reason that I moved forward with making that hire. We also had some earlier information regarding the budget that the student investment account money that Andy alluded to a few moments ago, is back the first week of April. So I think it was actually April the 8th. It was when I asked the board to prioritize, with that $440,000 we were excitedly planning for, if we were to spend 25% of it, 50%, 75% and 100%, what, what would the priorities be? And the number one priority, based on all of our polls, all of our, everything, our whole plan was social and emotional health. Number one was counselor. So I followed that lead as well to make, make that decision. Excuse me. All right. I've, I've done the preamble long enough. Here, here's the news. It's, it's the lesser of bad news, I think is probably the best way to describe it. The, just a couple little factoids real quick. The unemployment rate in Oregon went from three and a half percent in March to 14.2 in April. That's just slightly under the, the national average. So when people are not working, they're not earning income, duh. So therefore we're not collecting income tax, which the majority of our state fund is funded by. We recognize that the impacts, when I say we, it's, I'm talking of the organizations, the impact of the loss of these last couple of months is not going to be something that's going to made up, may be made up in a year's time. Just like the, the loss of, of classroom time that we've all experienced this past two months is not going to be made up just by adding a week or adding an hour or something like that. It's going to take time to catch up that lost time. So the early indications is this would be a three to five-year impact. And those of us who are young enough slash old enough to remember our earlier recessions where it took the local governments quite a while to back up, get up to close to what was level at some time. So bottom line is this is not going to be over quickly. It's anticipated that the governor will call the legislature into special session sometime in June, if not later. Of course, the challenge for us in trying to put a budget together is we need a budget approved and adopted by June 30th. So even with putting a budget document together, we know that we still may, need to make changes. We've been advised by COSA, which is the consolidation of Oregon school administrators and our education advocates, are advising us to build our budgets on the full second year of the biennium. So the idea is we need to show the legislature that we need every penny that was passed originally for this 9.0 billion two-year plan. If we're to say, we could, if we were to say we can do it on 90% of that money, then thus we'll get, get funded at. So even though we're going to build our budget at the full funding, okay, here it comes, everybody. This, the, the impact I'm going to share with you is what we know as of today. And that is an 8% reduction next year. You'll see it in the paper is 4%. But that's 4% over a two-year biennium. And so since all of the money is going to be reduced in the second year of the biennium, that makes it an 8%. That's when I say the lesser of bad news, up until today, that number was doubled that. It was a 17% cut for next year. So an 8% cut, I just want to put that into the worst case scenario. An 8% cut to our $7 million budget is $560,000. That's the equivalent of 40 school days. That's the equivalent of six licensed staff. The reason I use those two numbers is because COSA has asked us to, each school district in Oregon, to put together a very brief but factual narrative to give every legislator to say, this is the impact if you don't provide more funding than the, the cuts that we've been asked to make. It took me, I'm, I'm still shivering in the sense of what that really means. What, it's ridiculous to think that we would cut 40 school days. That was four zero. Or reduce our staff by six people. Can't do it. It's just impossible. So that's the, that's where we need to move forward with as far as what possible adjustments we need to make. We've been asked to sit on this number for now and know that there will be adjustments over the next two to three weeks. Again, some of you have been through this before in the sense that, well, I actually don't want to go there yet. Hold, hold on that for, because I want to address what other funds we have available. So first is round the furlough. And again, we appreciate everyone's cooperation with that. We with, some employees are taking more furlough days than others, but as a general statement, for five furlough days, that will net the district about $75,000, $15,000 a day in savings that go back again towards any of these reductions that we might need to make in the fall. In addition, you've seen in the news, the CARES Act, that was the first round of federal COVID relief. Central Curry's portion of that from the state is $77,000. And so that is roughly the, the equivalent of a licensed staff member. And so we know that that money is going to be there for sure. And so when I talked about worst case scenario, knowing that that's the worst, we're, we're hoping that again, the legislature will give us some, some consideration and, but knowing that it's, there's also other public agencies that are, you know, after that same support, public safety, health, law enforcement, many state services. So let's see, I can't, it's, I think those are my notes on the budget. So I guess the question is what we do now is we, we wait and we evaluate then with those additional fundings of the savings from the furlough, our COVID care money, and any other cost reductions that we can do to protect and then provide the best model that we can in 2021. I'm open to any questions from the board members at this point.
I just had one comment, if, if what I was reading correctly about the student success money, it looks like, I mean, you know, who knows? But it looks like we, we may approach 50%, you know, between 25 and 50% of that.
Thank you. I was looking for that. I was looking through that other silver lining part of that. So Andy is referring to the student investment account. That was our $440,000 application. That is based and funded by the corporate activity tax or CAT, C-A-T. The first portion of that money goes into backfill the state school fund and then the remainder is then put into one of the buckets being the SIA. So if that were to come to fruition, that would bring us about $200,000 back in. So roughly 50%, between 50 and 55% of our application. So that's, that's, that was an important thing to remember. So thank you, Andy, that positive. So between, so between those three, the 200 of the SIA, of which we have, that's where we are funding our, our counselor at Riley Creek. And then the COVID cares money and the furlough money, that's about 350,000 of the potentially 560,000. So it's getting closer. And again, we're hoping that we can get closer to, to full funding. We'll just have to wait and, and adopt the budget, the bet, with the best information we have now and then make those adjustments accordingly. And if, if people hopefully will understand this, we didn't want to go through the process of hiring a teacher with the, and not, again, before today, not knowing if we could hire them and then lay them off. So it's better, just to go ahead at this point, I am going to give Tom permission to interview candidates for the position and the anticipation that we'll be able to do it. And then we, as soon as we know we have that secure funding, then we'll, we'll make the offer. And we fully, again, please understand we're, we, we know where the blends are, we know the impacts of those and we're going to have to get creative if we're in the worst case scenario. And, and I, I look forward to working with you in, in making those things happen.
And also, you know, for, the state has, I forget, 600 or 700 million, or almost 800 million dollars specifically allocated for education as kind of a reserve or whatever. I forget what they call it, but it's, I, I would imagine it's for situations like this.
The rainy day fund, yeah.
Yeah. So there, yeah, yeah, there's any number of, of potential places that can, could possibly fill most of the rest of the gap. So yeah, Tim's right. We're in wait and see mode, as hard as that is, patience is not my strong suit either. So we shall see.
Clarify real quickly, 50% of the SSA money, fellow board members, the top two priorities on that were the counselor and the three through five instruction, correct?
Yeah.
Yep.
Actually, yes, that's true.
And that, the 50% would fund both of those positions?
Yes.
And so one more clarification, Mr. Wilson. The ODE is directing school districts then to proceed as, as planned in terms of scheduling the budget.
That's correct. That's correct. With, with the intended message that we can't run on it less than what you told us already.
Yeah. And the legislature has to come clean, kind of clean this up. I don't, the governor can't do it, you know, yeah. So it's going to require the legislature.
So again, the other items, you know, the lottery, no one's, no one's hung out in bars or scratched tickets. So the lottery is way, way down, down 75%. Measure 98 will have an equal hit as far as that 8%. So there's a lot of other programs that we try to take the, the bulk of what we have and try to maintain programs. And so again, yeah, that's, that's all part of the, the big puzzle.
All right. Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. There is one more thing. I apologize.
Yes, sir.
I can, I can see the long faces on many people. I, I wanted to finish with, with this scenario and it's based a little bit on, on your, our local history, local meaning obviously before me. And I'm looking at Gene and Tom and, and those of you who have been around for many years. And I'm looking at Gene and Tom and, and those of you who have been around for many years. We, at this time, I was in Roseburg when this happened. And this last time where in a, at that time, I think it was like two thousand and two was when Roseburg had its big hit. But in a, in a district budget of seventy million dollars, there was ten thousand dollars left in the bank on June thirtieth. I mean, that's like point zero, 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 one percent. So the only way that we were able to make it through is all employees, rather than cut staff, all agreed to have furlough days. And that year, every employee in Roseburg lost thirteen days of pay. But the net result, and that got us over the hump into the next year. But the result was all the, all the positions, no positions were cut. Any open positions were filled through attrition. And then I was able to be in Roseburg for six more years after that to see the other flow of that. So those positions were eventually added back. So I'd in no way want to have our, any of our, our staff feel that there's going to be a layoff. There, there, there probably will be, have to be some discussions again down the road about creative solutions to make this happen. Will there be another furlough? We just don't know. And, and but I, but I know there's anxiety. But please also understand this is every school district, not just in Oregon, but across the country are having these same conversations. Unless you're like at Riverdale or something, then that's something different. But anyway, if you, again, if, if any staff have questions or a thing about this message, then I'd be happy to, to get more information or explain it to you. Open anytime.
Okay. Well, we'll move on to eight point one. And if our, our budget committee potential members haven't ran for the hills yet, we can talk to them real quick.
Do want it. I got a quick question. Can I, can I go, Andy?
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to ask Kelly in Erin, are you still there? How long do you want to serve? One, two, or three years?
That was going to be one of my questions was if there were terms.
Yeah, well, I guess you get, you get an option, yeah, one year, two year, or three years.
Oh, I don't know. I'd probably sign up for two or three.
Yeah, I'd sign up for two.
Okay. Yeah, we received your, your letter, so thank you. We might actually have a full panel this year, I think, for the first time since I've been on the school board. So yeah, no, I, yeah. Does, do any of the board members have questions for Erin or Kelly besides how long they would like to serve?
Quality candidates right here, quality candidates.
I just want to say thank you for, for stepping up, both of you.
Absolutely.
You're welcome.
Yeah. Thank you.
No, thanks, thanks for you guys, too. Takes, takes the village, it really does. Just trying to do my part.
Yeah, it sounds like there's going to be some things to think about.
Absolutely.
Yeah. The, the good news is, you know, Erin and I actually both work for a special district right now, too. So we do have a good background and a lot of that sort of rules and requirements and budgetary understanding, understandings of some of the regulations and different factions that happen with the district. So there's a little bit of background to go off of. And a lot of the things Tim was mentioning sound very familiar in how we work.
Okay.
Andy, can we lump them together in this motion or?
Yes, we can, I think.
Anybody else have anything? Kaylee, Nancy, on them?
No.
Nope. Yeah. I move to appoint Erin Minster and Kelly Timchak to district budget committee for two years through two thousand twenty-two.
I second the motion.
All those in favor, we'll, we'll do the roll call, Mr. Martinez.
Aye, yes.
Ms. Sorenson? Oh. What? Can you hear me, Nancy? Oh, she froze up. All right, there we go. Ms. Clarno?
Aye.
Okay. And Andy is an aye as well. Congratulations, you're stuck with us now.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, guys. I apologize, but I'm going to step off because I can hear two young children screaming at my husband, so.
No, that's no problem.
Bedtime around here.
Okay.
See you guys again soon. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you, guys. All right, we'll move on to eight point two here, approval of administrative.
Okay, back to the meeting. Thanks.
Approval of administrative confidential and supervisory staff salary schedule for twenty twenty-one. The, the schedule's essentially the same, you know, it's in the packet here. The increases are the same as what was negotiated for all of the other units in the school. And hopefully everybody had a chance to review the schedule. Anybody have any questions about that or discussion?
I do. I don't know if I'm allowed to speak or not.
Yes, yeah, yeah, we, you can, you can comment at a specific part. You can identify yourself though, because I can't see everybody that's participating.
Okay, Deja Champlain, and I just wondered if you could re, can you, can you clarify what you just read? Are we talking about, are we talking about salary increases being discussed on this?
Yeah, yes, we're approving a new schedule from the prior fiscal year that matches.
And who are the beneficiaries to these increases?
This is the administrative confidential and supervisory staff. So these are the, the, correct me if I'm wrong, Tim, these are the unrepresented people, the people that aren't part of the labor unions.
So this would be the two principals, the business office, the school secretaries, food service, and transportation supervisors.
Okay, and this, just to confirm, I'm just for my own mind's sake, this is, this is specific to district employees as well or only?
These are all district employees.
All district employees. Second question, and it's kind of rhetorical, but I don't know if we have an answer or not on that. Why are we discussing raises for district employees when we have a budget crisis for teaching licensed folks? I, I, it doesn't make sense to me, and I'm just kind of wondering why that's even on the table? If we know we have a budget crisis for our learning objectives? And that's my question. You can answer it however you want, but that's my question.
I'll, I'll take this one. This is, we, we negotiated, there are three separate groups of people who all work in the school district. The licensed, the classified, and then all the folks we just discussed. We, to be equitable to this group of people that we're deciding on, the, the union, we negotiated with the, the union employees last summer. They're automatically going to get the same increase that we're discussing here. So we're, we're just keeping it equitable, the, everything equitable to the employee, all employees of the district. That's the, that's what we're doing. You know, it seems a little counterintuitive, but if we come up with a solution to deal with our current problems, we'll apply it to all units equitably somehow. But this is just to keep this particular unit of employees equitable to the, all of the other employees of the school district who are already getting this.
Okay, I, I understand what you're saying, and I'm not going to debate. But I do just want to point out that in the midst of this situation, from the perspective of a parent that's observing for the very first time, I've never been on any of these meetings. But from a parental perspective, if we're being told we need to wait before making decisions on this budget, if it will, if it will directly benefit a teacher or a staff member that's licensed, and we're talking about furlough days, potentially thirteen necessary for these other staff members, it's not just, it doesn't seem counterintuitive. It is counterintuitive. How can we justify saying, hey, we're, we're going to give you this increase, but then, but then not take the responsibility of mitigating having to lay off or potentially not hire a teacher when that is our objective is to educate? So I, I get what you're saying, I get it. I'm just, I guess, I hope I don't make any enemies on this first call. I, I'm sorry if I am, but I'm just letting you folks know right from the gate. I, I'm not going to take a backseat on it. I'm, I'm going to be present, I'm going to listen, and I'm going to speak up when it doesn't make sense to me. This doesn't make sense to me.
Okay. Well, yeah, we, we can, we can discuss it in greater detail. But I mean, the point, the point is, and we're going to move on here, but we would be punishing one unit and not the, not punishing isn't the right word. We'd be cutting one unit and not the other two. And it takes all three units to run the building, so, and run the district. So that's, you know, that, that's the short answer. It's obviously more nuanced than that. But we'll, you know, clearly we'll be getting into this at the budget meeting, so. Any board members have any other questions or comments?
I, I, can I comment to it on her, on her question? Andy, and Deja, and Deja, just to clarify, and that's what I wanted Mr. Wilson to clarify, the Oregon Department of Education right now is telling school districts to continue with their, the intention of fully funding their budgets like we, we are going to through the end of the biennium. So that's in what Mr. Wright's speaking about in the equity lens, we're, we're moving forward with our budget, how we were intending to.
And, and I hear that. And with that being said, we should have, we should, we should hire a teacher then, right now, if, if that's what we're going to do. Because if we're going to show the state that we need those funds, it doesn't hurt to hire the teacher and then make cuts necessary to whoever needs that at that time, at least in my opinion. I'll, I'll let it go for now.
Okay, yeah, no, this, this is, this is budget committee conversation. So it, it will continue, I can, I can promise you that. So.
Thank you, Deja.
Okay, anybody else?
I see Tina's hand up, Andy.
Go ahead, Tina.
Sorry, am I unmuted?
Yes.
Okay. Quick, I know you're all kind of rolling your eyes at me. I just, I was a little disappointed and disheartened that I found out about the pay scale going up in front of the board today when it directly affects me. And I didn't know about it until I read the agenda that it wasn't, it also wasn't shown to us. You know, I just don't understand the reasoning behind that. Maybe you have reasons. It just doesn't sit well with me. I also wanted to point out to Andy that the the increase you said is in line with the other associations, and it's not. The classified association last year negotiated to not accept the increase in benefits and instead to take nine percent for the next two years. Being nonrepresented, that option was not given to us. I just wanted to point that out, that being nonrepresented, we didn't get that choice. So in that way, it is, it is different. Thanks.
Tim, yeah, correct me if I'm wrong, but, but that unit also received an increase on their insurance reimbursement that was, you, when you added that back in, it was total between the salary increase and the insurance increase. It equaled roughly nine percent.
Yes, so to, to, yeah, yes, so the, to confirm, the proposal in front of you tonight equals what the licensed staff agreed to, which was the three and a half percent and the increase on the insurance cap. Whereas the classified unit chose not to put an increase in their insurance cap and rather put that onto the schedule. So it was six percent plus the three percent step, which equals the nine that Tina was referring to.
Okay. Thank you, Tim.
You bet.
Okay. Any others? Where do we go?
So, and, and to clarify, if this wasn't in the public, the increase is the three point five plus a step for this employee group, for those who have steps.
Correct. Okay. I move to approve the two thousand twenty, twenty-one salary schedule for the nonrepresented groups of administrative, confidential, and supervisory staff as presented.
A second.
All those in favor, Mr. Martinez?
Aye, yes.
Ms. Sorenson? Okay. Ms. Clarno?
Aye.
And Andy is an aye as well. Okay. Eight point, we'll move on to eight point three, which is approval of the superintendent contract for two thousand twenty, twenty-one. Details, hopefully everybody got the details on this. We're changing, it, it includes the, again, the same increase we just discussed for the, the previous group. And then some minor administrative changes. We're taking out, taking out some vacation days, but we're counting winter break, spring break, and some other as paid holidays rather than vacation hours. In the situation of early termination, payment at fifty percent rate of unused vacation hours at the time of termination. In parentheses, hopefully this won't happen. And then deleted benefit of payment of the Rotary Club dues by the district. Does anybody have any questions about that? Okay.
I'm sorry to be the squeaky wheel. Am I to understand that we're discussing a pay increase for?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any, any other questions from the board? Okay. I move, we approve the superintendent contract as presented for the year two thousand twenty, twenty-one.
A second.
All those in favor, Mr. Martinez?
Aye, yes.
Mrs. Sorenson? Oh, there we go, I got the hand. It's really slow tonight. Mrs. Clarno?
Aye.
And Mr. Wright is an aye as well. Okay. Eight point four, discussion of twenty twenty-one board and district goals. Tim attached a copy of our current goals for discussion and kind of looking forward. Tim, I'll kind of let you.
Sure. And again, I'm going to try to fill my screen here.
I just want to like.
Are they there for you, board?
Yes.
Great. Okay, so the, and for the audience, I think you can see them as well. So the top three are the goals that the board had. The, the goals are actually set up in two sections. There's the board goals that they wanted to accomplish as a board. And then I'm going to scroll down here a bit. And then these were the district improvement goals that relate more to student achievement and success. So I'm going to scroll back, so you go slowly here. So my intent tonight was to remind you of the goals that you. So my intent tonight was to remind you of the goals that you had this year. And then whether or not you wanted to say that, yes, you've completed it, or you wanted to continue with it. And then, second of all, especially if it would have an impact on our budget discussions, if there were specifics within those goals that needed to be a part of the budget considerations, then you, that that would be an advantage to adopting or discussing those goals earlier. So so those are the, those first three. And then for your further consideration, actually, I should probably stop there is for discussion for the board to have if they want to continue with those three goals, or if they want to say that they are accomplished, or if you're at this point, you just want to discuss it and then make more of a formal discussion or adoption at your June meeting. So I'll turn it back to you, Andy, for a discussion about our current goals.
Okay. Sorry, I'm having to.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you're reading on the phone.
Yeah, yeah, no, I was just trying to formulate some thoughts here. You know, obviously some we're going to roll into next year.
So the promised scholarship, as an example, was scheduled to be done in April, but we'll probably finish that this summer. So in essence, you could say that number one is complete.
We, a quick question. We were supposed to meet with Renee in April, correct? With the district leadership team again?
Yes.
And was that going to help formulate some of our possible decisions with the budget?
Yeah, that was the intent. And then the COVID happened and that meeting was postponed till, again, sometime this summer or early fall. Again, I'm not asking this to be an action item tonight, but it's just something to remind you of what they were and, and consideration to continue or consider complete.
Yeah, no, it's.
The conversations with. Sorry, Andy. I was just going to say the conversations with the DLT, the district leadership team would be valuable. I know there were some of them in attendance tonight. But to be able to converse with them, again, I guess, on that platform. I don't know if that's a reality before the, the budget meeting, but just that continuing to foster that relationship would be beneficial for the district, I believe.
Yeah, no, I'm, I, I, I think it's good to, I mean, we haven't, we haven't reviewed them for, at a minimum, just, just to review and kind of cross a couple off. And then, you know, again, as Tim alluded to, kind of trying to think, think ahead to next year, what we're going to add, you know, what we're going to carry over, what we're going to add.
So if, if I may, then Andy, I did have a couple more to add for your consideration and discussion, maybe in June. And those are these two. And certainly, again, a lot of these were pre-COVID. And, and so, but with that said, the first one is to investigate the possibility to reconfigure our schools, changing Riley Creek from a K eight to a K six, and then moving the seventh and eighth graders to the high school campus. This would certainly only be, be in the investigation and evaluation process. There's a lot of factors that would impact this type of a decision. The activities that would include certainly involving our public and, and their activities or in their concerns or praises for such a move. We'd want to evaluate our, what our curriculum and instructional benefits are. We don't want to move it just to do it. There needs to be reasons to do such. And so our, our evaluation of this possibility would include the impacts on staffing, both positive and negative, if any. With opening up six or seven classrooms at Riley Creek, it does give us some, some options to use that space in a different way. And so two of those ideas would be, and this was actually kind of in the plans for year two of the SIA, was to consider having a pre-kindergarten option at Riley Creek. So again, the making the move would facilitate that as well as in increasing the classroom size to accommodate the seventh and eighth graders. We would move the district office operations to part of Riley Creek. And so again, that's all part of one goal. I would, again, based on a lot of factors, we don't know tonight as far as budgets and so on. I, you know, a half hour ago, I said that the budget situation may not get more, any more optimum for the next three to five years. If there are certainly some economic impacts on this proposal, we can't move forward with it. But at least want to do some, some solid research on what it might look like and, and, and evaluate its benefits and so on. The second goal is related to our current situation, and that is to improve our instructional and operational model related to pandemics and other emergencies. And then again, some activities to go with that, which relates to also the action item eight point five about policy around emergency situations. Currently, we have crisis plans that take care of immediate crises in the building, if you will, whether that's a fire drill or earthquake drill or an evacuation. But this takes it several steps deeper. And as you can see, the, the proposed goal would include some consistency in our distance learning model as well as other possibilities of what school might look like in the event of another wave of the, of the any pandemics or other emergencies. So those are two, two ones, two additional goals to consider.
Yeah, I think we've been talking about the, you know, the K six, seven, twelve thing for quite a while. And I mean, I think it's, we've been given, I think Roy worked up some numbers for us once upon a time and, you know, I, I think really kind of digging in and taking a, a look at, you know, benefits, getting some hard data, you know, I, I'm fully in favor of that. And deciding how it is where we're going to move forward, so. In, in terms of investigation, I would support digging, digging into more info on that and then, and then, yeah, number two, kind of a no brainer in this situation.
Yeah.
Anybody have any other thoughts around goals tonight?
No, I'm, I'm in favor of those. Thank you, Mr. Wilson. I, I see number one of the additions tying in with number three and, and looking at how those are related with the long facility plan and what we're looking at there. I guess on that note, I'll just, I, I don't know if anybody looked at what the Oregon's election results were last night in terms of the bonds that went through. The Canby School District overwhelmingly passed their construction bond. And then, Mr. Wilson, I don't know if you knew the other, it was, there was another school district, probably in the Portland metro area.
Centennial.
Yeah, that, that overwhelmingly passed their, their construction bond as well, but it was just interesting.
Yeah, unfortunately, Roseburg's lost fifty-two to forty-eight. And, yeah, and, you know, and, and I think we could, there's some lessons learned from that. Just south of, in South County of Douglas is Glendale School District, which is just slightly smaller than, than we are. They passed a one point eight eight million dollar bond, which was, was specific to some capital improvements, their HVAC system, security, communication system and so on. So one lesson learned there might be a, a smaller amount is sometimes more palatable. Our, our current bond that will be finished paying off in less than two years is about a four million dollar level as compared to those early estimates of building a new K twelve campus, which would be up around forty million. So, yeah, that's just information for us as we move forward with considering all those different plans.
Mr. Wilson, I'm sorry if I may.
It's actually, yeah, Mr. Wright's meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Yeah. Do you have a question? Do you have a question regarding the, the goals?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, I, a lot of you don't know much about me. I went to Reed's Port when they went through the K twelve conversion of getting rid of a junior high per se. And it was utter chaos and not really well sought out after, if I may say, because they had this plan of action to keep the junior high kids from the high schoolers. So there wasn't that interaction, I guess. And it was, it didn't work whatsoever. It was, there was, it was more headache than a blessing, I guess.
Okay. Yeah, no, we, like I say, we're, it, it, it's, it's opening, you know, this has been discussed in the district before. And it was the, the last time it was like, you know, showed up to a meeting, okay, we're going to do this. And we're going to do this next year with two months' advance notice and we're, you know, we want to have the discussion completely, you know, get the data, gather comment from all affected parties. And so it's, you know, there, there are benefits, I, you know, I, there's also downsides. So we're, that, and that's what we're, we're looking to find out. So, so thank you.
Uh, real quick, I need to get to see who made that comment. Who was that?
That was Chrissy.
Okay.
Sorry, and thank you.
Uh, thank you.
That's okay. Well, let's, yeah, let's, let's roll this one over to the, to the next month and kind of be, you know, maybe, I don't know if we'll be able to check anything off before next month, but, you know, now's the time. But what was our, Tim, what was our timeline for having our goals?
Well, our, our grand scheme pre-pandemic was to have these done in April. So we're just a little bit behind. So last, last, this current school year, we didn't adopt goals until September. So we're, we're in good shape.
Okay.
So again, my only, my, the only caveat to be, would be if you saw anything specifically that would impact our budget planning. And so now that you have the goal, the proposed goals in front of you, the budget committee can consider those at their meeting on June third. How, how those goals interact with the proposed budget.
Maybe, maybe I was misreading the, the, the timeline there. Are we, you're, you're talking about doing that for next school year or the year after?
Yes, so for twenty-one, the goal would be to do the evaluation next school year for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
Okay, yeah, 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 yeah. Okay, yeah, that's, that's, that's what I thought.
Okay.
Okay. There's no, no other questions about that. We will move to eight point five. No, I'm sorry, board members, is there anything else? Okay. All right, eight point five, first reading of proposed policy EBC dash EBCA. And I'll let Tim kind of give you the short version.
So essentially, when the Oregon Department of Education last week sent out its guidance regarding the potential for any summer programming or facility use, that a new requirement was that this specific policy be adopted within the school district's board policies. And since we didn't have that policy in our current book, I asked OSBA, Oregon School Boards Association, to send us sample language. And so essentially, this gives us the, what is required then to meet the new ODE standards specific to infectious diseases. And so I'll scan again this. Just a reminder to, yeah. I'd be happy to make copies of any of this to, to any local folks who are interested, but if you want to look at it real quick, essentially gives us the directions on, on developing that emergency plan. As a quick side to that, this, earlier in, last fall, this South Coast ESD, as an agent for the South Coast ten districts, well, let me back up one step more. The federal government gave ODE money, now trickled down to the ESD, to have all school districts develop an emergency operations plan. And so we started that training last summer, actually. And as recently as last week, I, I have a committee now working on this in our district, and we're going to, we have some benchmarks of meeting infectious diseases. And one other one that escapes me right that in June. Excuse me, so I'll have a report on this policy at your June meeting, but we'll finish year one of that emergency plan and, and then finish it up a year from now. So essentially, it's operations are in the case of an emergency. And a lot of this we already do, but now it has to be specific to infectious diseases annex.
Okay. I will, we'll review and discuss next month for our second reading. Any questions from the board about that?
No, thank you.
All right, thank you, Tim. We'll move, we'll move to board member comments. Sorry, I stopped my video, so people didn't have to watch me do this reading. Yeah, board member comments, sorry. Luke, anything?
Yeah, I just, I'll just touch on, thank you for all the comments. I know there's, we got this, the chat, and I, I just see things popping up, but not fully being able to read them, but you know, we're just entering this time, unprecedented times of having to move forward. And I guess I just have faith in the district that we'll all make the best decisions that we can to move forward together. I just wanted to maybe say that. And I appreciate what everybody's been doing in this last two months, having my kids at home and going through this process and communicating with teachers and whatnot. It, it definitely is challenging, and I just appreciate all the hard work that everybody's putting in. And it's nice to see the community. I know that one of our, our goals, right, has been community involvement, and we're getting it. Maybe not everybody agrees with, with what's happening, but at least we're getting involvement. And, and that's only what's going to make our community stronger, is that we're all involved and we're all moving together and, and trying to do the best thing for our community. So I just wanted to touch on that, and I appreciate everybody that's here tonight. So thank you.
Thanks, Luke. Nancy? Anything? Oh, you're, you're, you're muted and, and it's pretty choppy. Okay. Yeah. Sorry. Kaylee, anything?
I just wanted to thank everybody who showed up to give their opinions and, and talk about their perspectives. These times, everybody, it's, everything is so uncertain. talk about their perspectives these times, everybody, it's, everything is so uncertain right now, but I think, I am like reading a lot of the comments in the chat, which probably shouldn't be there, but I, I think that it's important that we value all of the employees in the district, and by having that equitable lens, I think that we, we can show that we value all of the employees that are working in the district, not just particular groups of employees, and it takes all of the employees in the district to make the district run. So I just wanted to share that express, that, that, those thoughts.
All right. Thank you. I want to echo Luke's comment. Yeah, thank you to everybody for everything you're doing. It's, it's a tough time, you know, on all fronts, so thank you to everybody for all you're doing, and, yeah, to, also to echo everybody else's comments. I mean, I, I read the agenda tonight, knowing that, you know, this, this is not a normal act, you know, approving pay increases in the middle of, you know, this discussion, but the bottom line is, is I'm not comfortable having one group, punishing one group, when the other two groups are, are already receiving something. That's not okay with me, and the, the reality is, is we're going to come up with a, we're going to be forced to come up with a solution that affects everyone equally and not certain people disproportionately. I'm not okay with that, and so that's, those are my thoughts, and, yeah, we will move forward. Next board meeting is June 17th, 2020. The budget committee meeting is in two weeks, I forget the date.
June 3rd.
Are we doing that via Zoom, or are we going to?
Yes, yes, unless the governor changes the, the executive order, so, to clarify that for, because all the budget committee, I believe, is here, with exception of Vera Wallace. So we will be hand-delivering or making arrangements for you all to have the budget hard copy, and then there will be a summary on the district webpage. In addition, and that'll be out right after Memorial Day, so next week, that summary will be out, which will be a week prior to the meeting. There will be, there, we've created a new comment sheet called, or a comment email, so that people can make public comment based on that summary or that document. It's budget@ccsd.k12or.us, and people can make their public comments that would be read into the record during the Zoom meeting of the budget committee. And, yeah, so that's, that's a new, a new wrinkle for us.
What's one more at this point? Okay, if that's all we have, then this meeting is adjourned at seven.
Real quick, just, Michelle mentioned in the comments, too, I, I ended my principal's report too early, and I did neglect to mention the, the wonderful community scholarships that are coming up. Traditionally, we have honored our scholarship awardees, recipients, there we go, via a scholarship awards night. We are not holding that due to the fact that we're still in, in this current situation. So what's going to be going on is the week of graduation, each day on our Facebook page, we're going to be posting videos from the various award organizations, revealing which of our seniors they chose to honor this year with money towards helping them achieve their college goals. So start looking for those on Gold Beach, the Gold Beach Panther Pride page the week after next, and we are, again, as always, incredibly honored by the fact that, that our community just rallies around these kids who are graduating and aspiring to go off and do, do new things, and helping them find means that they might not otherwise have. Thanks, sorry.
All right, thanks, Josh.
Josh.
All right, okay. Now the meeting is adjourned at 7:55 PM. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it all.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
You bet.